All right, we'll go ahead and call the Committee of the Whole to order. Mary Jo, can you call the rule, please?
Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Belvair.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Broddick.
Sue is absent this evening, excused.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
All right, the first item on our agenda is the minutes from our last meeting due to May the 24th. Are there any comments or questions on those? Make a motion to approve.
To approve the minutes, Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
All right, we have several guests that are with us this evening, and so we're going to move through our legislation portion of this quickly and then give as much time to them as possible because they can answer the questions that we may have on this legislation, of course, as can Mr. Reguiz and the mayor. All right, the first item is Ordinance 2021-18, and this is providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $25 million. And we discussed this briefly at our last meeting, and then Mr. Reguiz did send out some additional information on this as well. Are there any questions in regards to this ordinance at this time?
Just one brief question. So as far as the timing goes, we're going to go out for the $25 million. We're not going to change that based on our current estimates?
So this is, good question. So this is a maximum $25 million? It's not to exceed the amount, just like the budget is?
Right.
So I would prefer to keep it as is at this point?
And when will, I mean, we'll have to make the decision before we sell the bonds?
Right.
So do you anticipate adjusting it prior to then, or is it too soon to tell?
It's too soon to tell, but adjusting it is definitely within the realm of possibility.
Okay, thank you.
And then how quickly after the third reading would that happen? I think you said in the timeline, if I remember correctly, but I wasn't sure. I don't remember off the top of my head.
So that would tend to happen right around the August timeframe, once we get the bids?
I'm sorry, I missed it.
That would happen right around August.
August.
When we get the bids, we know the costs, a very good estimate of the cost expected.
All right, so we would pass this on third reading and then make an adjustment if needed prior to?
So no, so no adjustment would be needed. The legislation would go forward, and then we would sell the bonds to match what the expected price is based upon the bids. Yeah, so I would keep the council apprised of the information going forward, but there will, no adjustment would be needed on the legislation.
Up to, okay.
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions on that piece of legislation? All right, very good. Next is Resolution 2021-24, and this is on first reading. This is approving the construction budget and authorizing execution of the guaranteed maximum price limit for the city center project. And the maximum price right now, $21,312, $312,772. All right, this is on first reading. Are there any comments or questions regarding this? Okay. Then the last item that we have on Committee of the Whole is under, is Ordinance 2021-17, and this is amending Section 105.03 definitions of our ordinances, and this would allow council to meet virtually under certain circumstances. Either the president of council can call for that, or the majority of council, and that would be, as we discovered during COVID times, would be very helpful in times when, especially when we have to call a special meeting of some sort in the summertime or between meetings. Are there any additional comments or questions regarding this? Okay, and that is on second reading this evening. All right, that completes, yes, ma'am?
What about the conditional use? Should the committee take a vote to recommend?
Sure, we can do that, absolutely. Yep. All right, we do have a conditional use from the Planning Commission, and that is the confirmation of conditional use for the city center and a single-family dwelling house district at 8,000 Memphis Avenue. Of course, this is the proposed location for the new city hall and police station, and it does need council's confirmation. Are there any comments or questions on that?
I move that we recommend approval for the conditional use.
To recommend council approve the conditional use, Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes. All right, that concludes our agenda, so we do have several guests. So at this time, I will turn it over to the mayor, and she can introduce our guests this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Well, you guys have met the entire team a few times now. Jason Noldy from GPD is going to kick it off this morning, or this afternoon, geez. Jason, I put the easel in the boards if you want to use those, over there. Mary Jo moved out of the way?
Here.
Do you want the camera to show it? Should we move it? Do you not even know if you need to use something?
Yeah, we'll see if we'll need them, we can leave them there for me. All right, so good evening, everybody. Jason Noldy, project manager with GPD Group. We spent the last couple of meetings presenting, giving design updates. We have Alan Robyn from Bowen's office as well here, in case there's any follow-up questions related to that, but we wanted to take some time to update you on the process that we took in terms of developing the budget that was presented today for the legislative approval and give you at least our recommendations on it. So in terms of how we, where we're at, I guess, we've gone through programming, we've developed what that is, and we've gone through now the schematic design phase where we've developed the overall design concept and gotten some preliminary ideas on, you know, major components, HVAC systems, structural components, and building materials. And what that's allowed us to do now is to put forth a better estimate that we are presenting today. So the way we did that was, we've asked each party independently to develop their own cost estimate. So Bowen has a cost estimator on their team, and then Mark and the group from Panzika have also, they'll explain in detail how they kind of procured their numbers, but we asked them independently to kind of put their eyes on the project and determine what they feel is the correct value, you know, given the current construction market for our project. And we do that independently again so that we have multiple set of eyes, and we start to bring forth different assumptions related to where we're at currently in the design process and to better vet out what those kind of numbers may be. So after we've gone through that process, there was a little bit of a delta between the two, which is somewhat good because that leads to the discussion. We start to vet through the items that had a higher delta to them and dove deeper into what each party sort of assumed with the current design, and we got both of those numbers to within 2% of each other. At that point, the project was over what we had initially presented to council on November 2nd of last year in terms of an overall budget. So we, as a team, started to develop a value management system where we start to look at ways that to bring the project without really compromising the actual program or the sort of the essence of the spaces, you know, some of the behind-the-scenes items, some of the systems, looking at different ways to bring the project to within, closer to within our original budget. And following that process, we did get to within 5% of the actual number. That value management system, that had a list of 18 different items that we were looking at, some of them, you know, after discussions internally with the administration team and with Bowen, we, you know, some of them, we've already crossed off, they didn't make, you know, they didn't really hold, but some of them, we haven't fully vetted out yet, so there's still potential that there could be some additional opportunities to reduce some of the costs. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark, and just so that you can touch on, I guess, on your process in terms of how we developed, and then we can talk about what our recommendations are with the next steps.
Excuse me, may I ask a question? Could you expand a little bit on what was looked at regarding, I think you said value management?
Yes.
I think we, like, value engineering?
Yeah, if you don't mind, let me have Mark talk you through the process, and then I can, I can walk, we can together walk through that list of items.
Hello, everybody. This is Mark Panzika. As Jason alluded, the process that we take during this stage of estimating, since that is schematic design, is we evaluate the drawings, we use our in-house database of cost material, but because of the way the market is right now with the volatility of materials, we also went out to the streets and used vendors and subcontractors to help validate what our assumptions are at this stage of the game. So we went out in pretty much all the major trades of construction, steel, masonry, glass and glazing, carpentry, so on and so forth. And part of the costing that came back, you know, what we're seeing in the market, there is cost increases that are happening almost on a monthly basis relative to, I'm saying, all the major trades. Steel is probably one of the bigger ones, glass and glazing, mechanical equipment have all been ones that we've really seen some volatility in. So part of the process that we worked with, with GPD and Bowen and their estimated consultant, was how do we look at it all differently? How do we use different materials to build the same mousetrap in a different way? We looked at using precast panels to use as the exterior walls as opposed to masonry with steel bar joists as roofing systems. So we really tried to dissect how we built it to find the most cost-efficient solution at this point. That resulted through, as Jason said, a number of meetings where we kind of bantered back and forth what the right approach was, and then we ultimately ended up at a budget now that we're within 5% of where the original budget was at. So that's kind of the process that we use in order to get to where we're at. If anybody has any questions, we have to entertain.
Well, my only question is, you said there's increases every month, and we're not set to write ground on the actual build until this fall, so...
So we have tried to anticipate some of the increases, we don't have a crystal ball. We're also anticipating that prices are going to start coming down and leveling out. The lumber market has been pretty volatile, we're hearing that that's going to start to plateau. Part of our discussion and dialogue about this whole process is to, our thought is to finish the drawings, put ourselves in the best position to capitalize on the market when it starts to come back down, and if it turns out that we don't, we go out for bid in August and the numbers don't come back right, we can always delay for a little bit and then go out again later on. But having the drawings complete puts us at the best opportunity to take advantage when things start to come out, and you're the first one into the marketplace where subcontractors are still pretty hungry and looking for backlog for upcoming years. So I think that's what we're seeing is probably the best strategy, given the climate we're in right now.
So you don't anticipate that going above the 5%?
We're going to work to make it sure that it doesn't. It's, I said, I don't have a crystal ball, but part of the process that we work pretty closely with Bowen's team is, how do we do this a little differently so that we don't affect the program like Jason alluded to, but the stuff that you don't see on the surface, maybe we can change around and find better ways to build it.
Anyone else? Any committee? So let me add a couple of comments to that, too. Part of what we're also carrying within this estimate is approximately $1 million for what we're calling a design contingency, so that could be applied to, you know, fine-tuning the design, or maybe that's part of some of the escalation costs that may be out there, but that's, that's part of what's being carried currently within the estimate. In addition, I think Mr. Reguiz provided you an updated overall sort of project cost as well. So I took similar spreadsheet to what we reviewed in November and updated it based on the costs that we're seeing currently here, and we're also carrying then on top of that an owner's contingency as well, that's, you know, part of that overall project number. Let me see if there was anything else I wanted to touch on, and then we can go through the value management list. So in terms of the next steps, like Mark had indicated, if we do proceed forward with this, what we're recommending, if the budget is approved, that would allow for the mayor to enter into agreement with the first GMP package, which would be the early site package that is, and I can pull up the site plan to show it if you like, but that's the parking lot, the new parking in front of the recreation. So that would be kind of value-added, I think, no matter what, even if the project, as Mark alluded to, if the pricing doesn't pan out in the fall, you know, it's still, you still have some value added in terms of providing some parking upfront with the recreation department. And I think that touches on the items that I was going to review. So let me pull up the site plan, we can go through the value management log. So some of the items that we had on our value management log that we kind of considered, the first item is probably has the, has one of the bigger values, which is taking the parking spots that are on the top north portion there of the site and creating sort of what we call a land bank. So those are parking spaces that were, that would be, that we wouldn't develop, fully develop that portion of the site immediately, but it would be planned for in the future. And that's an easy alternate as well, so if the pricing does level out, as Mark indicated, it's something that we could easily pull back into the plan. So we would proceed forward with it as an alternate. Then another item was reviewing, you know, at the entry plaza there, modifying the design from the, like a paver system to a stamped concrete. You know, it's just, it's a more economical system at this point, it creates a similar design feature for the entry.
I would also say that it, you guys mentioned that the heating system actually works better with the stamped concrete as well.
Yeah, the melt, the snow melt system does, is, would be more efficient with that, with that assembly.
So are these the changes that have already been made? Is that what you're...
So the ones that I am going to, I mean, I can read to you all of them, or I can read to you ones that we're recommending as part of this budget.
Okay. I mean, I don't know how other people feel, but definitely the ones you're recommending, and then maybe you could email us the entire list?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so both of those are items that we have recommended. Another one is just changing all of the brick, and I believe it's the, Mark, maybe you need to help me clarify on this one, the, changing the brick to utility brick. It's just...
It's a wire brick.
We haven't accepted that.
No, we didn't.
Okay.
We did not accept it.
Okay.
We said if you went to modular, we'd consider it.
Okay, that was, I'm sorry, that was one we're considering. Another one is just using a different system for the cast stone paneling system that we're looking at. It's the same look, it's just a different manufacturer that provides it. And then Mark touched on the revised structural assembly, so getting away from some of the steel and using a precast concrete assembly to create some of the areas that is considered the tornado shelter, and again, it's not anything that would, that would really be seen, but it does have a cost savings to it. Looking at, let's see here.
Jail floor.
The jail floor, yeah, modifying that from what was a resinous flooring to just a polished And then changing some of the garage walls. We are looking at a load-bearing precast in lieu of a masonry assembly. Again, it's just going to be a quicker, easier construction. We're considering some different HVAC modifications, but none of those have been, have been accepted really at this point. And then simplifying the curtain wall in some conditions where, again, it's just going to create an added horizontal molyen, so it's a, instead of a bigger span of glass, we're breaking it up in order to make it a little bit more economical, a minor design change, but one that provides some cost savings.
Are you talking about the glass that's on the front of the building?
Yes.
So instead of the vertical fins, we'd have something different?
We still would have the vertical, but we're adding one horizontal line into the, into the overall.
Fins are all...
I'm sorry you said fins, but there are vertical, there will be vertical lines, but they're not fins.
Okay. I understand the difference now, thank you.
Okay, so, I mean, with that, yeah, if there's any other questions? So you, so these changes that you're making, you would anticipate changing them back if the pricing comes back down, is that what you're saying? Or these are for sure staying out, no matter what happens? So these are ones to get us to within that, with the budget number that we're presenting today.
I'd have to say, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of recommended HVAC discussions that still need to be had, and everyone has a different view. When you make changes to HVAC, though, it could impact usability going down to the future, how it works. So for me, I look at it as, sometimes it's worth the investment upfront if you are providing an environment where people are comfortable working, but not only that, the cost savings of functioning it monthly, there's a savings there. So those are the things that we still have to kind of dive into and look with heebie. But I always look at those, what are those costs that we have to pay every month in heating and electricity and stuff like that?
Okay, anyone else have any questions for Jason or Mark? Robin, did you need to add anything? No, just your...
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your update, the update and the time. All right, that is all that we have. Mary, is there anything else that you have to discuss?
If there's no further questions.
All right, my only concern, I spoke, I'm sorry, is there somebody else?
No, no. Do you want to grab that, Tom?
Oh. My only concern is I spoke with the mayor and Tom about this, and of course, we're all aware of the legislation that's currently pending before the Ohio Assembly, actually they might have passed one of them, or the Senate, in regards to income tax collections going forward. Through this, through the COVID time, in the emergency order, companies were still allowed to withhold income tax from employees that would have been working in the city of Brooklyn but were working from home because of COVID. That, there's some that are trying to pull that back and going forward, changing that completely to whereas if you work from home, you would not be able to withhold those income taxes in the city in which the company is located. And of course, we know that we have several large employers here, i.e. KeyBank is the main one, that has transitioned during this COVID time almost exclusively to being at home. The mayor did send out some information in regards to that, but that is a concern that I have going forward as far as, you know, budgeting this. If that legislation were to go through and were to pass, that could have a very negative effect on the city's income. I'm still comfortable at this point moving forward with the, with the construction of it, but it is something that we need to keep in mind, at least in my opinion, going forward, because that could have a pretty drastic impact on our city's finances in the future, and I know Mr. Reguiz is well aware of that, but just something to think about, maybe to discuss as we're moving forward. And of course, as they just mentioned, I was going to ask a question about anyways of the increased prices. I think that it's optimistic to say they're going to go down. I hope that you're right, but inflation seems to be creeping up rather rapidly, and it doesn't look like it's going to go down anytime soon, that's just my opinion, but that and 85 cents will get you a drink at Speedway. But, you know, it is, it is something to take into consideration as we're moving forward. So I don't know of any other members of the committee? Yeah?
I just had one question. So I know we've talked about like the firing range isn't alternate. At what point do we have to, like, decide on that? I don't even know who would be the point person to ask, but...
Well, alternate means it's going to be designed in, and if the pricing doesn't come back within the budget, you would decide at that point that you cannot afford to add it to the project. So at the final, I'm not sure what you call it, we can call it bidding, but the final pricing of the project.
So around like August-ish is when we're looking to go out to bid?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And to piggyback off that, I believe when we discussed this, we were discussing it to be about $1 million, would I think, if I remember correctly today, it's more like 1.79?
Correct.
So, you know, it's 79% higher than what we'd usually anticipated, so it's more than we thought it was going to be. Any other questions or comments at this time for the committee? Okay, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn, Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes. We will start council in about 10 minutes?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Do you want to go into executive session, reconvene Committee of the Whole?
Oh, for the, what we're going to do with the Council, I don't have a problem with that. Do you think that we can do it in that amount of time?
I think so.
Okay.
Do we need to enter back into this meeting?
Yeah, I will. All right, I'll make a motion that we reconvene Committee of the Whole.
Second.
To reconvene the Committee of the Whole. Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes. I'll make a motion that the Committee of the Whole go into executive session for the topic of considering employment and compensation of public employee in the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee inside the Committee of the Whole, be counsel, the mayor, the finance director, and the law director.
And the audit committee.
Oh, and the audit committee as well, thank you.
Second.
Okay. To adjourn to executive session, Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Are we cutting Meg Ryan?
Yeah, I think we should.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
Second. To adjourn, Meg Ryan-Shackey. Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes. Committee of the Whole's adjourned?
That was good.
I'd like to call the Brooklyn City Council meeting to order. Mary Jo, can you please call the rule?
Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Belvair.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Broddick.
Sue is absent this evening, excused.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? All the pledge of allegiance, please remain standing for our opening by Kathy Pucci.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we are grateful to be able to once again meet in person and for the medical advances that make it possible. We pray for the continued progress inviting, excuse me, in fighting COVID-19 and for those who still suffer its effects, either from the long-term side effects or due to the loss of a loved one. I'm going to share a prayer with you that was written by Dr. Colleen Heines, who is the incoming president of Xavier University, and the title is "We Asked." Loving Creator, we asked for strength, and you gave us difficulties to make us strong. We asked for wisdom, and you gave us problems to solve. We asked for prosperity, and you gave us purpose and brains to use. We asked for courage, and you gave us fears to overcome. We asked for patience, and you gave us situations where we were forced to wait. We asked for love, and you gave us troubled people to help. We asked for justice, and you called us to be just and lead with integrity. Lord, we have received nothing that we asked for or wanted, and yet we receive everything that we needed. For this we give thanks, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Please be seated. Make a motion that we adopt?
Second.
Or approve, excuse me?
To approve the minute, Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Belvier?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience is ready to say for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Morning, everyone. Good morning, good evening, it's something. Good Monday. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. Regarding the new police station, city hall and that, which I'm all for, and I understand the people on the back with their yards being up against there and the tree barrier. I know a mound's more money, but is there any main reason besides money you can't build a mound like six feet tall and the trees on top of it? I know if I was living there, to me, it would be fine with me to get more seclusion. If not, how about the highway barriers like on 480? Because trees come and go. I was talking to a friend who lives on Bitoff by the shopping center, and he says, there's supposed to be the tree line up there, and if they died, been replaced, because evidently a lot of the trees, I haven't counted or whatever, are dead and gone, and they sit there and look at the back of the shopping center, which was not supposed to be there. And they've talked to me, they said the city has no record of the trees were supposed to be there to hide that eyesore. But what is, what is, but maybe it'll change. The other thing, I'm for a gun range. My question, I work by a gun range on Bagley Road, and all day it doesn't bother me. I can hear the gunshots. Now, is this going to be soundproof where they're not going to hear them outside, where at the school or whatever, or the houses that are close to it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ubers. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay. At this time, we'll now have reports of committees, commissions, and boards. The Finance Committee did meet at 6:15 this evening, discussed the following. The city was awarded the 2020 CDBG Muni Grant that we'll be using to replace portion of the ice rink, and that was for $150,000. Ice rink, yeah, not a portion of the ice rink, the ice rink roof, I should read what's right in front of me. For $150,000. Thank you for that, Mayor. Also, a council discussed the approval of the salt bid as part of our salt consortium for the upcoming winter months. The price did go down this year for that, so we're grateful for that. We also discussed Resolution 2021-21, adopting the tax budget for 2022. Ordinance 2021-14, this is repealing and amending various sections of the ordinance of the city of Brooklyn, and this is in order to conform with the code and updated classification plan, and I will read those changes in the record whenever we vote to amend this later on in the meeting. We also discussed Ordinance 2021-15, enacting Section 13507 of the Audit Committee, and this allows for the Audit Committee to meet once a year, or as requested by the Director of Finance or the Chair of the Council's Finance Committee. This allows a little bit more flexibility in those meetings for the Audit Committee. We also discussed Resolution 2021-23, assessing unpaid costs of abating a nuisance and hazard violations according to the city's ordinances. That total cost is $1,200 for this year that we will be assessing. And the last thing we discussed in Finance Committee was Ordinance 2021-19, amending Section 52114, noxious weeds and common weeds and grass for the city, and this just updates our current ordinance to allow for different types of notification in addition to by mail for people who are in violation of high grass. And that is all we discussed in the Finance Committee. All are welcome to attend. We meet at 6:15. If the time being, it will be in council chambers. With that, we'll move on to Recreation Board. Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Safety Town 2021 is a one-week course that teaches children safe practices both at school and at home. By utilizing a realistic child-sized town designed to provide a complete hands-on safety education, includes 911 calls, pedestrian, school bus, fire, and seatbelt safety. Location Veterans Memorial Park Safety Town Course. The program is open to Brooklyn residents, students who attend a school in Brooklyn city limits. Fee $35 includes t-shirt, take-home materials, and certificate. Registration begins June 1st through August 1st, max 20 per session. Ages, children entering kindergarten for fall 2021, 2022 school year. Register at www.brooklynrec.com. Session 1, July 19th through the 23rd, 8:30 a.m. to 11 a.m. Session 2, July 19th to the 23rd, 12 p.m. to 2:30 p.m. Sessions 3, August 16th to the 20th, 8:30 a.m. to 11 a.m. Session 4, August 16th to the 20th, 12 p.m. to 2:30 p.m. Session 5, August 23rd to the 27th, 5 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday instruction, Friday graduation day. Brooklyn Recreation Summer Hours through August 31st, Monday through Friday, 6:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Go to www.brooklynrec.com for pole lane availability and recreation center events. The outdoor pole will open July 6th through September 10th. At this time, we are not open to non-resident walk-in visits. The outdoor pole hours will be in conjunction with recreation center summer operating hours noted above. Patrons may purchase a membership online at www.brooklynrec.com or in person at the recreation center. Royal Park Outdoor Basketball Tennis Courts are now open through August 8. Hours of operation Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Basketball courts resident hours, Monday through Friday, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Residents must register for an account at www.brooklynrec.com and obtain a wristband at the Brooklyn Recreation Center. The Recreation Board meetings are canceled for June, July, and August. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is our Domestic Abuse Commission, Councilman Ryan Shaki.
Tomorrow, June 15th, is Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Elder abuse is more than just physical abuse of senior citizens. Elder abuse includes financial, physical, and emotional abuse as well as self-neglect. In fact, nearly 45% of elder abuse cases in Ohio are classified as self-neglect. Last year was particularly difficult on the young at heart people across the country and world because of the high-risk category of COVID, stay-at-home orders, and the pause on visitors at nursing homes across the country. While vaccinations have allowed our most vulnerable to be able to reunite with grandchildren, friends, and other family members, it is important to remember that many are still struggling. Last year, I made an ask on behalf of the Domestic Abuse Commission, and I am going to repeat that ask this year in recognition of Elder Abuse Awareness Day. I am asking that you call, send a card, or even visit a senior citizen or person young at heart, friend or relative that you haven't talked to in a while. Check in with them and make sure they are doing okay. A simple act can go a long way. Thank you for taking part in helping the Domestic Abuse Commission take action. That ends my report.
Thank you. The Public Safety and Environmental Committee, as well as the Public Works Committee, will have a combined meeting following tonight's council meeting to discuss Brooklyn street lighting. The city is looking into the prospect of changing all of our city street lights to LED lights. Representative from Real Term Energy will be our guest via Zoom. He's in Canada, so was not able to get here for this meeting, and anyone is welcome to stay and attend this meeting following the council meeting. Our Planning Commission representative, Sue Groddick, is absent this evening, so I will go over the Planning Commission report. The last meeting took place on Wednesday, June the 2nd, at 6:00 p.m. to hear the following. A request from Total Image Solutions for a four canopy mounted digital sign for a gas station at 4295 Tiedemann Road, and this was approved. A request for fast signs for three-wall signs for Al Palanque at 5,092 Tiedemann Road, and I'm sure I butchered that saying that, but the main sign was approved. The others were approved if they received the variances that are required for them, for the number of signs. A review of Premier Brooklyn LLC approved conditional use for truck and trailer parking for Ruann and Expo at 4,600 Tiedemann Road and 4,650 Tiedemann Road, and a recommendation was made for conditional use continuation. A request from Bowen for a conditional use approval for a new city center at 8,000 Memphis Avenue, this was approved. A request from Graham Automotive LLC for a two-foot-by-four-foot freestanding sign for statewide auto at 3540 Ridge Road, this was approved. A request from Archer Signs for three-wall signs for Espora at 5,000 Tiedemann Road. The signs were approved based upon variances, approval of variances that we required for those signs. A request from Essel Sign Group for a sign package at Dollar Bank at 4730 Ridge Road. The main sign was approved, but some other signs on the property will need to receive variances. And then a request from Rough Neon Signs and Lighting Maintenance and Corp. for a sign package for Click-It Computers at 4786 Ridge Road, this was approved. And a conditional use request for a car wash in retail business district for a Clean Express Auto Wash at 4630 Ridge Road, as well as a request from Jason Fenton for preliminary site plan approval for a Clean Express Auto Wash at 4630 Ridge Road. Both the conditional use and the preliminary site plan approval were denied by Planning Commission. The Committee of the Whole met this evening following our Finance Committee to discuss the following. The first was Ordinance 2021-18, providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $25 million for the purposes of paying for cost of construction of the city hall and police station. Resolution 2021-24, approving construction budget and authorizing execution of guaranteed maximum price amendment for the city center project. If adopted, this resolution approves the construction budget at a maximum price of $21,312,772. In addition, discussing those items of legislation, we also had representatives from GPD, Bowen, and Penzico here. All of those are involved in the construction of the project to go over some of the issues that we're facing right now. We are seeing pretty dramatic increases in construction costs right now, and those are anticipated to go up steadily over the next several months. So they're working on making some design changes in some of the items in the construction to make sure that we stay under budget, or at budget, I should say. Right now, they're about 5% over what the original budget was presented back to council in November. We will not go out to bid on this until probably August, and so some more changes will be made, but as it stands, that's where it is right now. And then the Committee of the Whole does meet following the finance committee meeting, all regularly scheduled council meetings. I think that's all the committees. Yes, it is. So at this time, we'll now move on to reports of council. We begin this evening with Ms. Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. I do just want to say one big final thank you to Mary Jo, and Dawn, and Ron, and everyone else who helped us get us too remote and keep us remote on and off over the last year, almost year and a half. I'm happy to be back in person, but appreciated being able to meet safely and remote throughout the ups and downs of this pandemic. We have held two community cleanups since our last council meeting. On June 5th, we had a great crowd at the annual Big Creeks Connect Cleanup. Thanks to everyone who joined, including our regular volunteers and those who were part of Boy Scout Troop 319. A small group of us even went over to Memorial Park and cleaned up the park and the creek along over there. We also had a cleanup yesterday at Knights Commons. We had a small crew, but we were able to clean up the park and along Bitoff and Ridge Roads. I've enjoyed seeing both regular volunteers and meeting a lot of new residents this year through these cleanup efforts. A reminder that our next cleanup is on Saturday, June 26th, at 9 o'clock, at the TGIF parking lot on Tiedemann. This is a great opportunity for high school students who are in need of community service hours. That ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan Shaki. Next up, Mr. Selhards.
Thank you. Good evening. This Thursday is the second food giveaway that's being done at the high school. Pre-registration is required. Please check on the school website or look at Mr. Hare's weekly news release updates to get the information on how to pre-register on it. Program's being done through the Hunger Network in Cuyahoga County. 25 families signed up for the first event, so we'll see how this goes. You do need to pre-register two weeks prior so that you can order the proper amount of food to come in and be distributed. Congratulations to Jenna Young, who finished in second place at the OHSAA Division II State Championship with a new Brooklyn High School record of five-foot-six-inch jump. Bubba's Yard will be held on Tuesday, June 22nd, once again in the parking lot at St. Elias Church on Memphis Avenue. It starts at 3:30. And this is the fresh fruit and produce giveaway that is done with the help of through the Greater Cleveland Food Bank. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Selhards. Next up, Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome back. I too am very glad to be back in person. And while I'm grateful for the technology that enabled us to meet remotely, it certainly has its challenges. And also thank you to Mary Jo and Dawn for learning the new technology and for adapting so quickly under pressure. I'd like to thank the residents who came out to the community meeting last week for the new city hall and police station. There was a very nice turnout, and I think it was a good forum for residents to be able to get their questions and concerns answered. Mr. Ardito, I'm sure the mayor will address some of your concerns, but I know early on, we talked about a mound, and in addition to the space that it takes, one of the concerns is also the drainage. Because if it's mounded up, even some of the residents on Brookway Lane were concerned about then the water ending up in their yard. Today, we kicked off our recycling project, which is Rethink Recycling, Recycle Brooklyn. And just as a refresher for everybody, we received a grant from the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District. We're going to serve as a demonstration project for other communities in the county to reduce the contamination in recycling. I've talked numerous times about what a problem this is and why it's important to our community. Just as a reminder, it is an eight-week program. Please make sure your recycling cart is out by 6:00 a.m. And basically, we have two different crews. We've got the route split in half, and they go ahead of the truck. That's why they start so early, and they just look in the recycling bins. If there's anything that doesn't belong in there, they're going to give you an oops tag. On the back of the oops tag, there's a category that will be checked, and then under each category of any contaminant that's in there, there are also specifics mentioned. So if one of the specifics is in that list, they will also circle that to provide residents with as much feedback as possible. This is educational, not punitive, but this is something that we all have an interest in helping correct. I just want to share some of the frequently asked questions that we do have on our website. The first, why is this important? Why should I care? Recycling is beneficial because it diverts materials from landfills and results in the recyclables being used to make other products. Contamination in recycling has led to increased costs for cities, and that is jeopardizing the chances of cities being able to continue to recycle. And while Brooklyn previously received small revenue for our recyclables, we now must pay to dispose of them. Many cities are charging residents for trash and recycling disposal, and we're trying to avoid these types of charges. Another one is why now? Contamination must be addressed so that we're able to continue to recycle and to ensure we're able to afford to recycle. And actually, part of all the contracts, there's a contamination fee. And although we have not yet been charged that fee, we have to be proactive to prevent it, because these contamination fees are on top of what we already pay to dispose of the recyclables. What is wishcycling? Because this is a really big problem. Wishcycling is the act of putting something in your recycling bin in the hope that someone, somewhere, will figure out what to do with it along the way. And while well-intentioned, wishcyclers do more harm than good. Wishcycling increases costs, and it reduces the amount of items that can be recycled. Non-recyclables in the recycling carts eventually do get sorted out at the recycling- Wish cycling increases costs, and it reduces the amount of items that can be recycled. Non-recyclables in the recycling carts eventually do get sorted out at the recycling facility, and they are disposed of as trash. Simply put, we must reduce the amount of contamination in the recycling stream, and this can only happen if the materials we collect are the right materials. It's important to focus on collection, since the quality of the materials we collect directly impacts the quality of what ultimately can be recycled. Then the last one I'm going to mention is why was my cart not collected? Basically, if it wasn't collected, look at the "oops" tag. It explains what you need to do, correct it, and put it out the next week. And our goal is to educate and inform all of our residents on the proper ways to recycle. We all have an interest in being able to continue to recycle and to keep our increasing costs manageable. I did, on my lunch today, I did respond to some of the concerns that were on Facebook. And, you know, at the end of the day, we have no control of what is currently recyclable and what is not. Some people think that just because it says recyclable, that it's okay to put in there. And that is just not the case. It's beyond our control. So when people keep putting those types of things in the bins, they're actually contributing to the contamination of the whole load. We did a pre-audit on our recycling. The results were a little higher than we anticipated. Our current rate of contamination is 38.1%, and we really need to bring that down. And I know Mr. Verba had some preliminary results from our monitoring today, and we were at 51%. Now, that's not to be unexpected, because this is, was the first day, and really, the first week is really going to be the most challenging, because hopefully, once someone gets an "oops" tag, they'll take the time to figure out what they need to do to recycle correctly, and we should see improvement over the eight-week period. For more information, you can visit our website, which is brooklynohio.gov. And also, a very, very good resource is the Solid Waste District's website, and that's cuyahogarescycles.org. And they actually have a lot of information on how to recycle items that are not picked up in curbside recycling. I just want to encourage everyone, especially parents, to please take advantage of all the opportunities that the libraries are offering this summer. There is the Mobile Pantry, which will have grab-and-go lunches for people 18 and under, and that's from 11:30 to 12:30 in Brooklyn, Monday through Friday. There's Virtual Summer Learning, and that's from June 8th to August 14th. And then, of course, the Summer Reading Game. The library is really focused, especially this year, on helping to prevent the summer slide that normally occurs, but it's even more critical coming out of this year of COVID situation and the virtual learning. Congratulations to our graduates. We are proud of you, and we wish you all the best in your bright future. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bellbeer.
Thank you. Yes, it is good to be back, especially for someone who's not the best on tech and savvy things like that, and always asking your son, "Am I doing it right? Am I doing it right?" It is good to be back. I'd like to say congratulations also to the 2021 graduating class at Brooklyn High School. I guess last week, they graduated, and it was a hot day, from what I hear. I wish them all success and good luck in all they do, and that God is always with them. I'd also like to congratulate sophomore student Jenna Young, who placed second, of course, in the state in the high jump, and that is with track and field. Even though you're part of a team, you actually compete against yourself, getting better and better when you do track and field. I've had a daughter that ran track and field, and she always said, "Well, you get better and better." So you're actually competing against yourself, and teams, too. So I thank her for making our city and our schools shine. This coming up summer, they're going to be starting to do some upgrades on our track over here on Hurricane Alley and the parking lots. So look forward to seeing some of the work being done. And I believe that there's a school, that one of the buildings nearby the school is going to have a new roof installed. So those are all nice, positive things that are happening. Also, the school is hoping to install cameras by the, by the track after the football season. And that's a great, a great thing that's going to happen, because they feel confident that they'd be able to host regional track meets, which would then, of course, generate more revenue into our city, more people coming in and seeing what a great city we have. Also, with the summer coming, you know, here amongst us, and a lot of people are out there doing a lot of walking, it's always great to walk at the track. I know they have funny hours, but it's like between 8:00 and 4:30. So if you think you want to go walking at the track, try to get in that time slot between 8:00 and 4:30, if you're interested in walking. The next thing, I've had quite a few phone calls asking for my recommendation as far as home improvements. And majority of the time, I do refer them to our building department here. But I also refer people to our Heritage Home Program that the city offers. I've looked into it, and I'm hoping I could use them, you know, for a little small addition. It's a great program, and they do recommend, you know, workers and construction people and things like that. Because right now, I, it seems like there's a shortage of people to help with home remodeling, and so they might be able to help. So if you're interested in doing that, you know, please look into the Heritage Home Hall. So you can also call them at (216) 426-3116. I'd also like to mention the friendly reminder, a friendly reminder that with the soft opening of our senior center, they do offer some classes, like chair yoga and ceramics. So if you're interested in coming to our senior center and taking, partaking in one of the classes, please call our director there, Karen there, just to see if you can reserve a spot, because right now, you're, we're at 25%. We're not full capacity there at our senior center. And the Cuyahoga County Board of Health is asking that the senior stay, senior center stay open at 25%. So if you have any questions or any concerns, please call over there. It's (635) 4262. The non-residents, which we have quite a few that come over here to visit our senior center, they'll be able to join July 5th. That'll be open for them. So, but our director also said that it's a good idea to social distance there. They're practicing social distancing and wearing masks right now, but as, as everything changes day-to-day, you know, mask-wearing may not be, you know, instilled there. So, you know, just ask over there when you call over there, just to find out. And that pretty much completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky.
Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone back. Hope everyone is enjoying the warm weather. This year's first Party in the Park concert was held on June 9th at Veterans Memorial Park. The band Flipside entertained the audience with classic rock from the 80s and 90s. It was nice to see many friendly faces in the crowd and having a great time enjoying the music. I would like to give a shout-out to the Brooklyn students on the fantastic job they did on the mural painting located at Brook Park and Ridge Roads. A big thank, a big thanks to Councilman Andy Selhards, who worked with the students in organizing this project. It looks great. Also, congratulate the 2021 class. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Just one thing, just wanted to wish everyone a Happy Flag Day. June 14, 1777, was when the Stars and Stripes flag was officially adopted, adopted as the flag of the United States, so 244 years ago. So I know our city does a great job with flags around the city, so Happy Flag Day to everyone. And with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you. Good to see everyone tonight, with all of our city buildings open as of today, with the senior center opening. We're all happy to be back in kind of normal mode. For those of you seniors that are uncomfortable going to the senior center, we do have a ton of outdoor events, including this Wednesday, they have a polka band coming under the pavilion from 1:00 to 3:00. So come out to join those activities if you're still a little uncomfortable. I want to welcome David Allen, who joined our fire department last week. He has replaced one of our firefighters that we actually just hired not too long ago, who moved on to another department. Also, with things opening up, we are scheduling some Coffee with the Mayors and Neighborhood Meetings. Have a coffee with the mayor Friday at 9:00 a.m., next Friday, in the senior center, as well as a Neighborhood Meeting on June 30th in Morcourt Park at 6:30 p.m. Mr. Ardito, I'm glad you came back in here to answer your two questions about the police station. One, Mrs. Pucci actually nailed it, that there's a grading issue in that area. We're concerned about water coming down to that area on our side as well as there. It's just, the area is just completely naturally sloped there, so we have to build around that in our site plan. So that's why there's not mounting in that particular area, outside of the cost as well. But we are committed to a heavy landscaping plan, and we do want to preserve that area for the neighbors that live over there. As far as our gun range, again, we're very cognizant of the fact that a gun range can be, change the environment for the neighborhood. We have gone out to Strongsville, where there's a gun range, and we plan on going out to more, where we're doing meter reads. Strongsville's right next to apartment building, less than 20 feet away. So we're, they did a really good job of soundproofing there. You could barely tell the difference between outside noise and when they're putting out, would you say, chief of rifle, what was the heaviest sound? And the decibels was not that much different than the street traffic. So if you have the, if you do it right, which will cost money, so when we're talking about the firing range, you have to be willing to pay the money to make sure that we do it right in the soundproofing. You do it the right way, you can really do a good job of soundproofing. The things that they've come out with over the last, you know, 10, 20 years really help in that arena. So definitely something that we're cognizant of, of the fact if we move forward with the gun range.
I'm all forward for it, so they get to practice easily. Like I say, I work on dagly. I'm probably 300 feet or so, select fires. I could hear a lot of shit all day, but that's not in a residential area.
I want to give some good news. I reached out to ODOT. I've been talking to them since the previous District 12 Director was in office, and they've been looking at the backup of the area on 480. If you're traveling west, if you all know that area, you get on, it backs up to Tiedemann Road, and that, where that cross-section is between 71 and 480, and going to Grayton. It seems like that every day, it picked up again, as were, the restrictions have been loosening. And as we see develop in our corridor on Tiedemann, I'm concerned about that backing up even more. So they've been doing a study for a little while, and I'm happy to say that next year, they'll be executing an additional lane in that corridor, which will, I think, help tremendously with the traffic going in that direction and help out Brooklyn, because we're exactly where everything backs up until. So moving that traffic forward, I think, is a good thing. And then, lastly, I just want to wish dads out there, Happy Father's Day, because that's Sunday, and go check out the garage, city garage sale. People, there's a ton of houses registered this weekend. Go check out garage sales in your neighborhoods. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, mayor. We'll now move on to legislation for this evening. The first item we have is notification of award, an award of a 2020 CDBG Muni, Muni Grant for the ice rink roof replacement for $150,000. Next is an approval for the Agreement for Salt Bid as part of our salt consortium. And our price per tonnage, as it was decreased this year, by $17.44 per tonnage. And we also reduced the amount of sun, amount of salt that we committed to purchasing as well. Are there any comments or questions regarding that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
To accept, to approve the acceptance of the bid, Meg Ryan Shockey.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes. Next up is a council confirmation for conditional use for a new city center in a single-family dwelling house district at 8,000 Memphis Avenue. And this was approved at the Wednesday, June 2nd Planning Commission meeting, but does need council approval.
Move to approve the conditional use.
Second.
To approve, Meg Ryan Shockey.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes. Resolution 2021-21 is on second reading, adopting the tax budget for the fiscal year 2022. Ordinance 2021-14, repealing and amending various sections of the codified orders of the City of Brooklyn in order to conform the code, the city's updated classification plan and collective bargaining agreement. This item has been held in advance for our last two meetings. Mr. Butler has made the following changes to this ordinance. Number one, we will keep, rather than repeal, Section 141.01, and that deals with the promoted ranks in the police, since this was recently updated. Number two, the fire chief has given the okay to keep with, quote, "at least three fire inspectors in light of current practice." Number three, grass cutting is no longer provided in the city, so that section will be repealed. And lastly, seniors' removal fees have increased, and they are now noted inside of this ordinance.
Move to adopt the substitute version.
Second.
To adopt substitute version, Meg Ryan Shockey.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes. Next is Ordinance 2021-15, enacting 135.07 Audit Committee of the Codified Orders of the City of Brooklyn, in order to codify prior legislation creating that committee. Any comments or questions? Make a motion that we adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Meg Ryan Shockey.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes. Ordinance 2021-17, amending Section 105.03, definitions of the codified ordinances in the City of Brooklyn. This is on second reading. Ordinance 2021-18 is on second reading, providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $25 million for the purpose of paying costs of construction, constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new municipal building to house governmental operations of the city, including but not limited to city hall and the police station, in clearing and improving the site thereof, together with all necessary opportunances, I always miss where I said there, too. And I read the Fiscal Officer's Certificate at the last meeting, and as a note, we do anticipate that the interest rate on this when we go out to purchase these will be right around 2%. It seems that that is holding fairly steady. Of course, we can't predict what will happen in the future, but it does look like that's going to be around that percentage. On first reading this evening is Resolution 2021-23, assessing unpaid costs of abating nuisances and hazard violations of Section 521.14, the Codified Orders of the City of Brooklyn. Resolution 2021-24, approving the construction budget and authorizing execution of the guaranteed maximum price amendment of the city center project. And as I reported in the committee as a whole, this price is $21,312,772. And lastly, is Ordinance 2021-19, amending Section 521.14, noxious weeds, common weeds and grass notice to cut, non-compliance remedy of the city, of the Codified Orders of the City of Brooklyn. And we are changing it to add, that notice shall be sent by certified mail in addition to any other method. These can include door hangers, et cetera. So that is on first reading.
May I ask, just for clarification, is something, so we'll amend it at the next meeting, Mr. Butler? The whereas?
I don't think you need to amend it, Councilman. It's the public document reflects the change already.
Okay.
So I don't believe it needs to be amended.
And that is all the items that we have on our agenda this evening. Does anyone on council, the mayor, or any of the directors have anything to add?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn, Meg Ryan Shockey.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes. At last evening, we are adjourned. In about five minutes, the Public Safety and Environmental Committee, as well as the Public Works Committee, will convene to have a joint meeting.